...Kennedy Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, barely, but we are. That this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 5, 5.1. First, we will, we will say our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Make sure I am on the right board meeting here. And I'm confident that I am. First up will be our roll call. Okay, and we have Ms. Felicia Moody.
Here.
Ms. Esteban Serta.
Here.
Mr. Sean Glovier.
Here.
Daryl Owens is here. Ms. Maria Cruz Perez is absent. Ms. Maria, Dr. Maria Douglas is absent. And Ms. W. V. Gomez is absent tonight as well. So, we are here and we are ready to go. Uh, we will take us to, um, Section 3, which is Public Comments on Agenda Items. And, Mr. Vice President, if you would check and see if we have anyone signed up to speak on any agenda item.
I'll let the record say we have no one signed up to speak.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So there is no one signed up for any agenda items? And no one signed up for any non-agenda items. That being the case, we'll skip down to Section 5 for the consent agenda unless there are any questions from anyone on the board regarding what is... Sorry? Read that again. All items under the subheading will be adopted with one motion unless they are removed from the consent agenda by a trustee for discussion.
Mr. President, um, I would like to ask about Section 5C. Uh, I think someone could clarify or maybe go over some of that information.
Yeah, I can tell you, every year we have to contact with, uh, AISD, Arlington ISD. Uh, Ms. Rawls, do you want to make your point?
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening.
So, um, this is our shared document with Arlington ISD, RDSPV, the Regional Day School Program for the Deaf. So it is just the agreement that we hold at Arlington when we have students who require sign language as their primary communication mode to, um, attend school in Arlington to receive that service.
Okay. How many students do we currently have?
Currently, we have four. Oh, not on, I had to talk loud. Okay.
You did good, yeah.
No, okay. Thank you.
And, any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, that was, that's good for me, uh, question. So, are the services held here or do, are the students going?
Um, these specific services are held in Arlington ISD and so we provide transportation, um, to, from their homes here to the campus. Um, depending on the age, it depends on what campus they attend. We do have, um, services for students with hearing impairments that are in district. Um, sometimes we use their audiologist for supports and so that's all part of the agreement.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing else? No other questions? Okay, then I will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move to approve all items under the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
Okay, so that was, um, motion by Mr. Glovier and second by Mr. Serta. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by I.
I.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. And we now move to our information only section, which is Section 6. And now we'll start with the construction update. Dr. G.
All right, Mr. Gabois will, uh, be giving an update. Starting with this month, continuing on from here on out with the progress of the bond, he will be reporting to the board every month on the progress of the projects.
Good evening, board members. It's an exciting time. And as we go through this, if there's things you guys want to hear about, um, you know, we typically like to share what's going on, some of the successes, some of the challenges, but specifically as we go through this, if you'd like to see different changes in the presentation, let us know. As, obviously, as we get deeper into it, it's going to be a little more sexy. You'll have a few more pictures to, to see. And as we've, after we finish this tonight, this will be posted to our website as well as progress photos, things like that will be ongoing, as well as the budget update. But we'll go through those. Now, as we start, um, you know, we're in the early stages of most everything in terms of construction and in design on a few other projects, but I'm going to take you through just about everything because the wheels are spinning on almost everything with the bond right now. So, it's getting a little busier. Um, we're all over most of the campuses, working hard with, with Huckabee, Reliance, as well as ABG, Steel Freeman to get these things going. So I'm going to talk you through each one of these things. The first one I want to go through are the roofing upgrades. Uh, if you've driven by the high school, uh, driven by the junior high, you see a, a lot of materials out there. Uh, at the, the junior high right now, we've probably got ninety, ninety-five percent of the roof demoed. Uh, base layers are going in. Found some surprises out there. Uh, the last roofing project didn't do a, a really good job or didn't do a good job at all on the drains. So we're having to go back and reinstall dozens and dozens of drains. And that's why we've gone through and you, you see large layers of, of black here. We're waiting on the top sheet until we can get the drains installed. That's ongoing. But the good news is we're on schedule to have the junior high finished hopefully before school starts and be out of there. Um, at the high school, we've got about ten percent of the roof demoed. We've started, uh, the base layers there. That's going to be moving along well. Uh, that's got about a hundred and eighty day contract on it. I don't think it's going to take that long, but that will carry on into the next semester. Uh, Patterson, as of yesterday, they were power washing the roof. They will be putting the coating on that roof in the coming weeks and that too will be completed, uh, by the time school starts. The HVAC and lighting project has been screaming through the summer. Those guys have come in with big teams. Believe it or not, we're about ninety-five percent done with all of the lighting district wide. Uh, that was a, a big order and those guys came through and knocked it out for us. From an HVAC perspective, um, at the field house, there were a couple of things we wanted to knock out this summer in advance of school. We probably had some complaints last year on the field house and how unpleasant it was. We hope to have the field house completed in the coming weeks. Uh, about ninety-five percent done with that, ninety, ninety-five percent. Um, we've got units coming in at Patterson. Those units are getting replaced daily, uh, about fifty percent done with that. And then at the junior high, we're actually improving the insulation on that building. We're going in and taking out all that nasty insulation that was up top, putting in new insulation. Uh, we're about ten percent done with that. But, um, units are starting to show up more and more, um, as they get manufactured. And so we'll be plowing through the air conditioning projects in the coming months and getting that knocked out. Very pleased with how that's coming along. The, uh, the efforts at the, the PAC have been slower than we expected. We turned them loose months ago. Uh, they started the process of ordering, uh, materials. They were onsite, uh, last week, week before last, I think, actually verifying some field dimensions for where equipment's going to go, where it's going to be placed. But we're looking for them, looking forward to them mobilizing in the coming days to get the PAC knocked out this summer. That included a new soundboard as well as, uh, some of the speaker systems in the PAC. At the, uh, the high school, we, uh, we've completed the bidding process. It has been a, an effort. Uh, hats off to Arthur Building Group and Huckabee, as we've gone through the challenges as well as staff, looking at options for where we could find value in the project. The numbers came in a little bit higher, uh, than we wanted them to. Um, but with the effort of the team, we've been able to bring this thing in, in a nice posture. When we get to the GMP later, I'll talk you through some of the things that are in the high school GMP that hopefully will please you, uh, and give you some, some good vibes for considering approval of that GMP. But with that, we'll be starting, uh, construction on that probably in July. We're going to issue a notice to proceed in the coming weeks, get the contracts executed, or get the amendment executed, and, uh, get rolling on that. We've been working with staff on a phasing strategy through that building. Uh, we're going to kind of do a leapfrog effort. We're going to close off a wing. Uh, we've worked with staff to identify where classes can be held within the structure so that we could get swing space to go in and actually get the work done, move kids back into that, take over another, uh, wing. Then we've identified specific work that'll take place over the summers, uh, this, and we're holding out for 2026. But right now, ABG is cautiously optimistic that they'll be turning this thing over by Christmas of next year. So, that's pretty good news. It's going to take a lot of effort, a lot of coordination. I did prep the principal and staff that it's going to be painful. They're not going to be happy some days. But if we get, if we hold on together, we're going to get through this. It, it's always a challenge when you go in and you renovate one wing. When you think about fire alarm, intercom, communications, that kind of thing. How do we put new systems in but still keep the old system up? We've got some plans for that and we're going to work through that together. At the junior high, about ninety percent complete with our construction documents. Um, we're projected to go out second week of July for pricing, uh, come back to you guys hopefully no later than September with the consideration for a GMP, which means we're starting work in October. And that work will carry us through the summer of 2026. There might be some, the, the challenge with the junior high is we don't have any swing space. Uh, with sixth grade over there, it's pretty tight. So we're going to start on the big addition first and then work hard through the summers to work through the interior renovations. Uh, but that's coming along nicely as well. One of the things you might ask, why is the junior high behind the high school? Um, because of the square footage of this addition and the, the, uh, occupancy designation, it sets off a trigger for a storm shelter at this facility. We were hopeful that we could take the old tilt wall gym and turn that into a storm shelter. Uh, but after extensive forensic analysis on that, it was determined that without extensive structural reinforcing, it was not going to support, uh, the code requirements for a storm shelter. So what we're doing is partitioning this new addition, the science wing addition, believe it or not, to hold all the students on that campus. Uh, it, it's, so that's kind of been the, the delay. It shouldn't, it's going to have a cost impact, but should be, uh, something we can manage within our budget. But that's why we're lagging a little bit behind the high school on the junior high. Central warehouse, uh, we held our pre-bid on, on June twentieth, had a great turnout, a lot of contractors, a lot of some subcontractors interested in that little project. Um, currently, we're looking to accept bids on July sixteenth. So we, we'll be back to you depending on when you decide to have your July board meeting, hopefully at the July board meeting, uh, for you to consider award of that contract and get your central warehouse, uh, under construction. Delaney and Patterson, uh, we've started design, uh, we're deep into design on, uh, Delaney. We're actually going to come back, I believe, in July with consider, consideration review of the design development on those documents. For Patterson, they've gone through, they've, they've done their interior 3D modeling. They've started the schematic design process. We'll be meeting with staff to look at options on that campus as well. Uh, but that's moving along nicely. We're looking to have both of those ready to go out on the streets for pricing in the spring of next year so that we can be back with the GMP for you guys to consider and get work done at both of those campuses. We're just about done with our RFQ for Construction Manager at Risk. You guys approved that delivery method there. So we'll be putting that out on the streets, looking, we've already got, uh, GCs calling us, of course. ABG and Steel Freeman are interested in those. So we hope to get, uh, a lot of interest in, in those two projects as well. Uh, one thing I have here is an update to the actual bond summary. We are tracking every cost with the project and we, um, periodically get with Ms. West and reconcile our numbers because, uh, I think she's fending off requests across the district to spend money on different things, uh, and maybe pull it out of the bond. So we're working together to see how we can balance that out. But what this illustrates to you is where we're at with the overall bond budget. That's the number on the far left. I've got a handout if it's a little fuzzy, but hopefully you can see it in your, in your deal there. Uh, once we agree to a contract or issue a purchase order, we commit those funds, okay? And then we track expenditures against those commitments as we go through the various projects. As of now, and it's kind of our golden rule, we don't have any change orders. Uh, but to date, we've committed over forty-five million dollars, um, of your bond funds to projects. Uh, you can see your budget balances there. One of the good things is we've been able to take a little bit of money from our roofing savings and shift those to our high school budget, which keeps us in good shape. Overall, we're in great shape budget-wise. We're beginning to see some expenditures. I was visiting with Ms. West on your, your bond fund balance right now to see how that's going to cash flow out in the coming months. We'll finalize our cash flow and get that to her in short order. But you're, you're in good shape. We'll probably look to the spring to issue another set of bonds or perhaps the balance to, uh, carry us through the, the bond program. But, but right now, we're in good shape. This is what we're going to post on the website. There are a lot of sheets behind this that build up to this. But you'll be able to see each month where you're sitting budget-wise relative to, uh, what the bond budget was and what we've committed and what's left to spend. So, uh, moving along nicely and...
Can I interje- oh, questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
So going back to the bond, so you, you are ultimately responsible for keeping us informed of the money or is that Ms. West?
Yes.
Yes, to which part of the question?
It's going to be a tag team. We, we'll present this financial summary to you. You know, I think the way, the reason we do it as a separate approach is, and Ms. West can chime in, but you guys get your bond money and it goes into a bucket and you write checks out of the bucket. Uh, she can, I think with some effort, sort various vendors and see where that, where monies go specifically. But we do that. Every invoice, payment application that is related to the bond comes across our desk. Uh, one of our team members will review it with respect to progress on work. We present a cover letter with that recommending payment and it goes into our cost tracking system. And so we know what we've committed for each individual contract and we, then we track each individual invoice. And so we've got a digital file of all the invoices, all of the, uh, the payments made. And that, as I said earlier, periodically we'll coordinate with the summary with, that Ms. West gives us to make sure we reconcile together. Now, the one thing we don't track is interest earnings. We kind of keep that off to the side. Uh, that's, we promised the voters we'd do this for ninety-eight million and change and that's what we want to present to them. If I start messing with the insurance and, or, and interest earnings and that kind of thing, it's going to confuse your voters, I think. So we're focused strictly on tracking everything related to the bond. So it's really a team effort.
And then, um, you said this is going to be updated on the bond website every month?
Well, once we do it, I mean, we, we, we're literally updating this as invoices come in daily, weekly. But as we present it to you, I, I don't want to put something out there that you guys haven't seen. So once we presented it to you, the updated cost tracking will go on the website.
Any additional questions for Robert?
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
All right.
Thanks, sir.
And we're now going to Section 6B, which is the first reading of CASB update 123.
So usually the first reading was kind of, it's just kind of a general synopsis. So all I'm going to do is kind of go through the local policies that are going to be affected and kind of touch on some of the things. Um, BBD, um, about the board training, uh, and orientation. It's just adding additional language because of changes in law that, uh, said that board members will now have to go through. If there's a PIA request based off of something that happened in the district, board members will have to attend the training themselves as opposed to sending our communications person to do that for you, basically. So that's the gist of the language change in BBD. BDFA, once again, is a conflict of interest, ethic, ethics, just additional languages being added. CCGM, which is the Ad-Lo- armed taxes, doesn't apply to us because we don't have a policy on that nor do we have any Chapter 313 agreements. Um, CKC is the Safety Program, Risk Management, Emergency Plans. It's basically a new requirement that requires the superintendent to develop procedures that provide, uh, for these notifications. So we will have regulations that are put in place that we'll bring to you before, uh, we vote on this approval. Uh, CKE Series is basically security personnel revamp, our old CKE policy, and adds additional details to it because of all the requirements with the armed security guards, SROs, police, you know, all of the different factions there. Uh, CQC, once again, is a new policy and it directs the superintendent to develop regulations to implement these guidelines that are recommended by the Texas Health and Human Services Commission as well as TEA. So I have to, uh, once again, have regulations developed. Those will be brought before we adopt it. DCE, employment practices other than contracts, it's just updated language. DGBA, which is the Employee Complaints Grievances, FNG, Student Parent Complaints Grievances. It just changes the wording and includes the word series throughout the document, uh, the pages. So that's really the only change there. And then EEH is Instructional Arrangement for, uh, Homebound Instruction. Once again, additional wording and changes in language. And then the EF Series, basically it revamps and removes our existing EF Series. It breaks it into two components, EFA Local and EFB Local. And this is the requirements for adopting instructional materials and library books. And so it breaks it into two policies. And that basically is update 123. So, your information?
All right. Thank you, Dr. G. Did that, I think, with the minimum amount of prep, too.
Yeah.
All right. So, that being clear, we will now move to Section 7, which is the business items that are requiring action. So we'll start with 7A, which is discussing the purchase of the CTE lab refresh.
Dr. Devlin will be presenting on this.
Good evening. We are here requesting the purchase of computers for our graphic design and computer science labs. These updates are necessary because the current technology that we have in those labs aren't compatible to run Adobe and Java that is needed for those courses. Um, and so with these updated computer stations, we're able to move the high school computers to the junior high to support our new course, BEM, that the students will be having in eighth grade. And that will allow, um, BEM students to have access to window applications and fully conduct the skill requirements of the course are not as accessible with a Chromebook. So in summary, these new computers will ensure that all students have access to everything they need to be successful in their courses. And with that, we are seeking your approval to invest in updating our technology infrastructure and in, and into, more into our CTE programs. Any questions?
Is this as a part of the, uh, the bond package?
No, it's through the CTE funds, yes.
Is this all coming out of Perkins?
Part Perkins and part 199.
Okay, okay, so part Perkins and part 199.
So I see you have two invoices, one's for computers, the other's for monitors?
Yes, so the, one of them is for our computer science lab and the other, the full desktops are for our graphic design lab. And Brian is here to answer any pure technical questions.
Yeah, just those, those monitors are, it's going to allow the high school students to use Chromebooks. Um, they can plug it in and the monitor will act like a dock. It has a USB-C connector. So they'll be able to connect to the monitor and then it'll also charge the Chromebook while it's plugged in.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a question, are the sizes of these new, uh, machines going to be the same as the, uh, the current ones that they have?
In terms of physical size?
Yeah, physical size, that's...
No, usually the, the Dell chassis that we, uh, there's, they're going to be smaller. The ones that we had before, they were, they were built by the, the computer maintenance class. So you bought a, you bought a case and it was more of a, uh, it was just a larger desktop designed by, by default. Just, but the ones they manufacture are typically considerably smaller.
Okay. So they'll be easier to transport as well, so...
Hopefully, we don't have to transport them that often.
Well...
Yes. If we need to, yeah.
Any additional questions? All right, well, if there are no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the purchase of necessary equipment to update CTE labs.
Second.
That's motion by Mr. Serta and second by Ms. Moody. You know, the questions, all in favor, let it be known by I?
I.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And we now go to Section 7B, uh, which is the ABG Amendment Number 1. Construction Manager at Risk for Kennedy High School additions and renovations as related to 2023 bond. And we welcome back Mr. Gabois.
Okay, board members. Uh, as I said earlier, we've had a, a lot of effort going in to get to this point with you guys. Uh, we are here to present, and I'll tell you what I'll do, it's short order, I'll pass these out. And first, let me apologize for not having these in your board packet, but we were literally working on this up until late last night. So, uh, what you have before is what we call the top sheet. It kind of breaks down the numbers by division and specifications. Uh, it also includes all the allowances. It shows you their, uh, fees, general conditions, contingencies, everything related to the project. Uh, we are currently recommending a, or we are recommending a guaranteed maximum price for additions and renovations to the high school of sixteen million, two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. Um, I will say it's a little bit higher than we wanted it to be, but it's kind of where we thought it might end up. Um, it's consistent with what we had budgeted in the bond, but a couple of things happened on the way to the forum. Um, as we got into it deeper, we spent time with your culinary arts staff. Um, the request was made, originally we had planned a culinary lab and a classroom to support that program. Um, the request was made to include two culinary labs. Um, so with Huckabee's genius and assistance, we were able to accommodate that within the square footage so that the classroom is actually part of the lab, kind of like a lab-science combo. So we've got two complete culinary kitchens in this. Um, we took a gamble. We made an executive decision through the process. Uh, that probably added north of eight hundred thousand dollars to the budget. When you think about all the mechanical, the plumbing, the equipment itself, uh, was over four hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, it was a decision, but I think in the long term, you guys are going to be in much better posture having two kitchens to serve that growing program than just one because you were already taxed with just one kitchen. Now you've got two. So I think it's going to give you the capacity to grow that program and something you, you can be proud of. Couple of other things, we, uh, as we got into it, meeting with the city, city wasn't happy with your fire alarm system at the high school at all. So they wanted us to replace the entire fire alarm system. Was not in the budget. Um, that, in addition to additional surveillance, um, on the existing campus coupled with the additions that we're doing, added another four hundred thousand dollars to the project. Uh, and then finally, I know we've been before you presenting some concepts to address the backside of Arthur, the retaining wall that's, that's somewhat failing, the drainage elements there and the fact that there's really no playground or play space that the kids can use effectively. So, uh, we've worked with ABG to come up with a, a solid estimate based on the current civil drawings that we presented to you guys of what it would cost to do that. Uh, and since ABG is familiar with the site, they've worked on Arthur extensively, obviously. Uh, as part of this GMP, we've included an allowance to address those improvements at Arthur. That is about a half a million dollars. So we were able to absorb all of that, uh, in this sixteen point two million. And if you recall, the budget presentation, we're still, uh, in the black on the high school. So I, I, fiscally, I think it's a good solution. Uh, certainly, uh, the, the expenditures at Arthur are certainly, uh, reasonable and, and acceptable within the confines of your bond expenditure. So we thought for the sake of expediency, getting that done and, uh, getting some economy of scale with Arthur, we would include that. And so I wanted to share that with you. But that's where we're at. We're recommending you guys consider a GMP for high school additions and renovations in the amount of sixteen million, two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars.
So this only adds a little bit to the, uh, what we expected to spend in this project?
It does. We had over fifteen million plus at, allocated for the high school. So what we did is we borrowed a little bit from the roofing project, which, if you recall, is about three and a half million under budget, moved that over to the high school budget. So we've still got a nice surplus, surplus under roofing, got a nice surplus under HVAC improvements and a little bit of surplus left over on the high school. So we're in good shape.
I guess I'm still, um, I think I understand, but when you say we're in good shape, you mean that if we combine those projects, what we reached, that we're going to pay on it, what we're projecting on it now, we're still in the, we're still...
You're still under budget.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah.
Okay, I have questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I have quite a few. The first one is the culinary. Where does that show in what, what you just gave us?
It's blended through there. It's, it wasn't a separate project. We have concrete associated with the storage facility for Fine Arts and BEM. We've got concrete associated with, uh, some paving. We've got concrete associated with the foundation for the culinary lab. So concrete covers all of that. Likewise with everything else, from plumbing to mechanical to electrical. All of those subcontractors looked at the plans and took all the various building components and provided a number to us for those components. We did not bid it as a separate line item. But just from our experience and working with ABG and Huckabee, we just, we took a ballpark estimate that taking a classroom and adding the plumbing, the mechanical, the gas, the electrical, everything associated with a... and adding the plumbing, the mechanical, the gas, the electrical, everything associated with a commercial kitchen in that setting, in addition to, we know, uh, between four and five hundred thousand dollars just in kitchen equipment, that, uh, that, that was the impact to the budget. But we were able to absorb that, uh, within the overall confines of our budget.
This is ABG's bid, basically, off the entire project?
Correct.
But it can't be, well, and, and it may be a bid, maybe I just don't understand. Originally, we were to have one culinary area.
Well, we, we had four thousand square feet or, and change. It's gonna be a nice big lab, and then it was going to be a classroom. What you're getting are two really nice labs with a classroom included and an actual bistro to serve your, your staff and community. We've done all of that within the square footage. We just increased the cost for mechanical, electrical, and plumbing and equipment associated with that. We didn't go over the square footage, but we modified the spaces to, to provide you with some opportunities for program growth in the future.
The idea being that we're having to turn kids away in the program.
Yeah.
Because of the capacity and the numbers. If we had two classrooms, that we could have two teachers as opposed to just one teacher.
Yeah.
That allows us to have more kids in the program.
He says two kitchens?
I understand that.
Yeah.
That's not my concern. My concern is the money. That's why I was asking about the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
You said this adds eight hundred thousand dollars?
Can you go back to this?
And that's the very general conditions? Or? I'm trying to follow along with this and all of the numbers that you rattled off.
Yeah.
Cause we don't have that to go back and look at.
Well.
So where, so we have that.
Correct.
But everything.
So if you, as an example.
Okay.
Okay. If you'll slide to the back page or the second page and look under spec, section twenty-eight hundred, twenty-eight zero 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 zero. You go down to the third line, you'll see electronic detection and alarm.
No, I'm not with you. You said the second page.
Yep, from the back, there you go.
On the back. It starts with two, seven, nine, four. Oh, okay, in the black.
There we go, I'm sorry.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, there you go. Go to, go to thirty-eight fifty-three on the left.
In blue.
In blue.
Yes, ma'am.
Thirty-eight fifty-three in blue.
Go over to the right.
Yes.
See that number, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand?
Two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, yes.
That scope of work was never in the budget.
That was the requirement of the city.
Correct.
Okay.
If you go up one line, you see electronic surveillance?
Yes.
We knew we would have to probably deal with the camera or two, but your system is outdated. So what we've done is we've upgraded that system, not just to include the main high school, but also to include the main spaces, the fieldhouse, the press, the, the stadium. That money was not in the budget.
Okay.
Now.
So we upgraded the system, it wasn't in the budget, that a hundred and thirty-six thousand is going somewhere else?
No, it's, it's all part of the high school project. Now, when I say it wasn't in the budget, it wasn't in the high school budget, it actually was in the safety and security budget.
Okay.
So that's kind of how we do it. Those are, those are hard numbers we can, we can put our fingers on. When you flip over to the front page and you go down towards the bottom to twenty-six fifty-eight?
Yes.
Go take it over to the right, you see one point one seven million?
Mm-hmm.
That's the kitchen equipment. Okay? We had half of that in the budget. But we were able to accommodate a second kitchen at the one point one seven million within the overall budget.
So it's not an addition?
Yeah, it is.
As far as money goes?
Yeah.
Where? Because you just said it was one point one seven.
Right, but that's for two kitchens. If you had one kitchen, it would be half of that.
So we plan for one kitchen. Instead, we're getting two kitchens.
Yeah.
A lab, that sweet bistro.
So we have to quit both kitchens, so.
Yeah.
We're getting more stove, more ovens.
Double the number, right.
Okay, so I'm gonna request for me.
Uh-huh.
I, I, I'd like all these numbers somewhere on paper. Because I can't keep up with, this is not, but this is what we budgeted for, but this is what we're gonna spend.
So we, we budgeted seventeen, I think it's eighteen, let me look back here.
It was budgeted for one, it's an additional eight hundred thousand. And then the retaining wall is an additional one point, half a million, or no?
Yes, if you'll look on the very last page.
Okay.
You'll see Arthur Early Childhood Center Phase Three, four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four.
And then the roof came under.
Correct.
So where is that?
If you look at, if you look at this budget here, the roofing renovations on the spreadsheet.
Okay.
We had, the, right now, it's showing eleven million, fifty thousand dollars in the budget.
Okay.
I moved one million, one hundred and eighty thousand from that budget before, so it dropped to eleven million, fifty. I moved it from there up to the high school. So the high school shows a budget now of seventeen million, eight ninety-nine, one eighty-one, okay? That's one million, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars higher than what we were carrying in the budget. So the budget, if you recall, were, remember the long lists, long spreadsheets we had? We did some black magic and we took those and we said, all right, if we go through this project, this is what the budget's going to be. Well, those budgets had HVAC in them, so I had to pull the HVAC out of that, had to pull the lighting out of that. We had to add fees and soft costs and those types of things. So we did all of that maneuvering to come up with a target budget for the entire bond program. The one thing that cannot change is that bottom number, ninety-eight six oh five, okay? So all we did, much like you guys, when you have a budget workshop and you say, this Wes comes to you and says, we need to move forty thousand dollars from function twenty to function forty-one because you're giving the superintendent a big raise, you're just moving money within functions. That's the same thing we're doing here. The bottom line doesn't change. Or maybe it's a little raise, but, uh, yeah, that's, that's the idea.
Okay. Well, I'm still gonna make, we have, I'm sorry, we have mosquitoes and flies and, um, I'm still gonna make the same request. Cause I'm trying to keep up as you're talking and writing and then having a question, um, and that it's a challenge.
This, this details all the costs associated with the high school project, it includes Arthur. It's important, just, uh, it's important to know that these details are by divisions of the specifications, okay? So we had roofing contractors, electrical contracts, mechanical subcontractors, earthwork, concrete. We had all these subcontractors provide pricing to us, okay? Filtered through those, made sure everybody had a valid scope in their, in their work. And ABG assembled these into a guaranteed maximum price for you guys to consider. The key element here is we were able to work with all of these different subcontractors, including, if you'll notice on the second page, we were also carrying, I'm sorry, the third page, um, we're also carrying a little over nine hundred thousand dollars in this in just contingency, in case we find some surprises behind the walls. So we're guaranteeing that we're not gonna go over the thirteen or the sixteen point two million. We were able to put all of this, assemble all of this, prepare a GMP, and present it in the overall bond budget such that you guys are still in the black. Uh, not just with the high school, but with roofing and HVAC right now.
Some of the, that's why I asked the question, you know, the bottom line.
Yeah, bottom line.
Moving money from, you know, one part of the project to another, are we still under what we had estimated? And the question answered, yes, so.
There, there're gonna be a lot of moving pieces, you know, there are so many different components to this. And so like the budget for what might have been set out for one thing is, may come under. Another budget may, for another part of the project may go up, you know, based off what you bid and what's the materials, whatever happens. So it's gonna adjust and shift. The key is the bottom line, is it coming in and what project was supposed to come in?
Yeah, another reason, if you recall, when we presented delivery methods to you, um, as an example, when we presented the number for the HVAC and lighting, it was a number. You got a number, that's it, okay? The beauty of this process is it's open book, so.
I'm sorry, you said the beauty is here?
Of this project, of this process for CMT, it's an open book process. And so it allows us to work with ABG as they, as they buy out and enter into contracts with these various subcontractors and vendors to track their costs across the project. So if we get to the end, and if you look under damp roofing and waterproofing, we only spent a hundred and twenty-seven thousand instead of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, that money comes back to you. This is an auditable process where they've got their fees and general conditions that they'll get paid to be your general contractor. But in exchange for that, they open their books to you guys and we get to see every, every penny they spend. So we'll be tracking not just that spreadsheet, invoices, payoffs, payrolls, everything else from, from ABG and their, their staff as we go through the process, so.
And I, my last statement with this is, I understand the bottom line may not change.
Yeah.
But the details in this is important to me as well. So if money's being moved, I'm gonna ask.
Okay.
Where, why, how? And that's great that the bottom line is not gonna change, but if someone asks me, I need to be able to explain it.
Right.
The bottom line, some people are great with the bottom line, but some people wanna know, look, what's going on over there? I read, I read last month and it said this, but this is a change, it, tell me why.
Right.
So I have to be able to explain that. So I'm going to ask questions.
We'll put a memo together for you.
Thank you.
All right. And I encourage you, if you have questions to ask, make sure you get to clarification, okay? Because we, again, this is a, a, an open, open process.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And we wanna answer all the questions that, that any of the board members may have regarding this. But I'm, I'm pleased with the, the, uh, the way we're just flowing, so.
We're heading in the right direction.
We, we, we invested a lot and we, we're anticipating a lot.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Any additional questions?
Uh, Mr. President, may, can I just make a comment?
Yes, Mr. Sir.
I know you just brought this today, but maybe it might help if we get this sooner.
Sure.
It would help with getting those questions answered ahead of time.
Yeah, I think some of us process things a little bit slower, I know I do, so it would help me if I could.
Yeah, I, and I, again, I apologize for that. It was, uh, we wanted to make it right, we wanted to make sure we had everything accounted for and make sure we were gonna be within our budget, so.
All right, so there is something that's required here. So, uh, if there are no questions with that and everybody's good with that, then I will entertain a motion.
Um, Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve amendment one, uh, to ABG's contract as presented.
So that is a motion by Mr. Sirda. And second by Mr. Glovier. All in favor, let it be known by I?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you, guys.
You have one?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, so that will take us through section seven. We'll go down to section eight, which is superintendent's report, and I'll turn over Dr. G.
All right, so we had our last board meeting right before the end of school, so we had a few more, uh, attendants, uh, well, enrollment issues, or not issues, but things that changed by the time that the school had ended. So, basically, we finished the year with, uh, uh, two thousand, eight hundred and nine students, uh, for the current school, the most recent school year. That was a change of about forty-two students from the previous year. And, uh, our open enrollment transfers were at nineteen. We did have twenty-three students that graduated out of the success center, uh, that came off of our attended, our enrollment as well, as well as five early graduates from KHS who, uh, uh, also came off our enrollment. So, you know, good things happening, but enrollment shows that it dropped, so that.
Which are for a good thing.
Some's good, some, some, you know, not so, so good, so, you know. All right, so that was, uh, that update. And then, gonna give you a quick, uh, update. So TSL, I just came back from the city last week right before we went to SOI Fort Worth and presented. Uh, TSL is a strategic leadership group, which is basically the, uh, thanks, Robert, which is the, uh, partnership that we have with, uh, Region Levin and TA through the grant from TA about developing a strategic plan. And basically, um, the strategic plan is, is revolves around academics. And so I'm hoping to bring that for you in August, so what that looks like. So I will have a update then. And then, um, construction update, Robert just went through, uh, several things. He touched on the, uh, playground at Arthur and the stuff that you'd already approved moving forward there. I know these flies are coming, sorry. And, uh, another thing I wanna touch on is that we, this week, we started painting in the first grade hallways and the classrooms, not the hallways, but the classrooms of the first grade to add some color into those classes to help them kind of resemble the rest of the school. And we have some graphics that will be coming into the hallway as well there, so it's kinda, we, we said that, you know, we, it was kind of plain Jane in the first grade hallway. We're gonna, making that look like the rest of the campus before we get to the beginning of the school year next year. And then, uh, a couple of other things as far as, I don't wanna say, not our construction, but construction with the city. If you notice, they have stuff, the road alongside Clover, uh, is it Clover?
Clover Lane?
Clover Lane, kind of blocked off and separated out. That's from the Safe Roots to School, the, the grant that they have. And so they have started working towards getting that done. I had a conversation with the city manager today, asking, uh, what's the status, where are we gonna be on that? He said everything in front of Delaney will be done before the start of the school year, so there should be no, uh, issues with our traffic there. And Arthur, I asked about Arthur, I said, what about the area around Arthur? He said, that will be when the start of school starts, but they are not planning on working during school hours. They will, or, sorry, they will be working during school hours, but after our arrival and, and end before the dismissal takes place every day. Says there's no issues with construction and, and traffic and all that. So I feel like we're in a good place there, but if you, uh, I think everybody, you can get on, they have a website, whatever you can get on if you wanna find out information about the Safe Roots to School. And then they've got kind of the map and gridded out what they're looking at doing and where they're looking at doing it. But right now, those two areas, in fact, are traffic related with the school district, so I, I've got assurances that Delaney will be, will be done completely there. So, all right, and then, um, I believe, that's it for me.
So for construction updates, you got anything on this right here? The baseball, softball?
They're doing the punch list, they, they're working through the punch list to sit there and finish out the project and make sure that it's all good.
Any ETA on that?
I, I don't think we have a completed completion.
Yeah, I don't really want them to give me a completion, I want it done right, so I don't wanna, you know, I don't want them to sit there and feel like we gotta have it done within a week. And we, we're still having to go back and redo it. I want it finished out and done the way that needs to be done, so. And we're not utilizing it, so there's no rush on, on that. I will say, uh, one of the other things we're gonna have to talk about is setting up a, uh, a special meeting, you know, when we get to, uh, discussion of special meetings, we'll go over that. But we are gonna have to replace the turf at the baseball and softball field in the indoor, um, there at life, past life expectancy. And those are gonna have to be addressed, and I think we've kind of touched on that a little bit before, but we're at that point. And, uh, you know, a long time ago, the district made a commitment to, uh, bring in turf into the district. And where we, there are replacement schedules and we're, we're past the replacement schedules on those. So that's, we're gonna have to set up a meeting for that.
That's for the baseball field?
And softball.
And softball.
In the indoor practice area.
And indoor practice area.
Remember, we replaced, I believe, football two years ago. And the track, and then did the tennis courts, the track and the, uh, and football field. So this will be the next step and make the next phase in that replacement.
This is gonna come out of unbalanced.
It, it will, yeah.
I'm sure there's some creative, um, steps that'll be taken to create space.
Big sales.
Okay. All right, Dr. Zad, is, are you good with that? Or you have anything else? I wouldn't be likely to get a copy of that, um, that Safe, Safe Path School, so, cause I don't, I don't, I haven't seen that yet. If I have, I've misplaced it, so I, thank you, I appreciate that.
I didn't make copies, cause I didn't talk to him until five and found out about, I finally had to call him to get the information from him about what, what he found out. And, uh, I didn't have copies of everything, so I wasn't sure what all he was gonna have in addition to it, so.
Yeah, I think we've all seen lots of changes happening, even on, um, bowling spring, you know, so, I'm doing some crosswalks and things like that, that's cool.
All right, great, okay, so let's, uh, wrap up section seven, let's go to section nine, and that's where the board discussion. So, uh, under the board discussions, I had asked everyone to, uh, just take, you know, uh, take a look at the, um, board operating procedures. And, uh, you know, there are no changes that we're making, but, you know, we need to cover that every year. So if there are any questions on that, you know, um, do anybody have anything in particular that they wanted to, uh, ask questions about or get clarification on? Again, it's nothing different than what we had before. Okay, awesome, great. Okay, so, uh, going back to that, um, first one there was, uh.
Upcoming meeting.
The next is upcoming meeting. So that's gonna be kind of, um, an interesting month for July, cause I'm gonna be gone a lot of July. So we take a look, and we're scheduled right now, if we take a look at when we normally meet, that would be on the twenty-fifth of July. And how does that look for everyone?
Twenty-fifth or eighteenth?
Well, I'm gonna be out of town on the eighteenth, so, yeah, I'm gonna be at a conference, so.
And very good chance that I'm gonna be out of town on twenty-fifth, so you're gonna have to sit in the big chair.
Okay.
Okay? So are we good with, um, um, the twenty-fifth? Twenty-fifth? Okay, so why don't we go ahead and set that for the twenty, oh, this is a little.
Just checking.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and set that? You can slap the table on that for the twenty-fifth.
And then if that's the case, I would like to have a special meeting the week of the eighth to address the turf, so we can get rolling with that.
July, July eighth?
The week of the eighth. Whether that's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, I mean, whatever works best, but, you know, Thursday, the, whatever works for.
I'll say the Tuesday or Thursday, so how's everybody look for, um, what do you, what do you have?
I think I'd prefer Tuesday.
Think you would? How's Tuesday looking for everybody on this side?
July ninth?
Yes.
Works for me.
And.
Yes.
So we're gonna go ahead and set our special, and six o'clock is gonna be okay with everybody? Or should we move it to five?
Where are we gonna meet? Here or at the?
I think we, uh, over at the, um, the other.
At the building?
Right, at the other one. So.
Eighteen one, at the.
At the C C, C S, sorry. Okay. So. Let's, um, put that down for six o'clock again?
Yeah.
Yep.
And the other thing that I would request is that we have a special meeting before the July twenty-fifth meeting. Um, start it at, let's say, five-thirty or, or, or five o'clock, five-thirty, probably five-thirty, and we can make that, start of the special meeting and then move the other, the other one down. Um, but we can address budget. Uh, by that time, we will have the appraisal of district's values that will, our final values that are coming in. On the, I believe the twenty-fifth is when they come in, right? Yeah, so we should get those that day. We will have a, be able to address our values that are coming in and kinda have preliminary budget, uh, discussion on the budget that will have to be adopted in, in August. So do a special meeting on that, um, before the regular meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, I think we, I think it might be more of a workshop, I think, from what, what some people were saying that we, we need to do, so. Yeah, so.
Working through the values and talking through the implications and all that, probably, so.
Yeah, I heard there might be some additional questions from some people, so I think that is an excellent idea for us to go ahead and do that. So we're looking at doing.
Five-thirty?
No, we're gonna do, still start at six o'clock. Am I right? You were saying, suggesting we start at six and then have to start the regular meeting at six-thirty?
I would say five-thirty, but I mean, I don't know, uh.
I think the challenge is people getting here from, from other places.
So if we start at six o'clock, we can start the regular meeting at, you know, six-thirty or whatever, so.
Yeah, six works better for me.
Okay, so six o'clock, we'll stick with six o'clock for the special and then move to, uh, six-thirty or six forty-five for the regular meeting. Alright. The only other thing that I would ask is that, you know, uh, we have another special meeting possibly around August eighth, where we can maybe s- address my evaluation and then, uh, separate that out away from the regular meeting. Move to, uh, uh, August eighth. And then also, I would like to include in that potentially the academic strategic plan that I mentioned earlier from T S L. So we can wait until July's meeting to set that, but I mean.
Yeah, but that sounds good, I think that's something we need to do. If that makes sense. Alright.
Okay, so August eighth is a, the special request for a special meeting for superintendent's evaluation and the strategic plan.
Yeah.
Both of those things on that one day, okay?
We've got a safety and security meeting on August first, Team Minister Owens.
When is that?
August first.
August first safety and security meeting? So, okay. We're gonna have some more to play about that.
So a special meeting the eighth as well?
Well, nothing's. Potentially, yeah.
Potentially.
Potentially, yeah. So we can discuss that more at the July during the meeting, but. Could you put it on your tenant tip, like, you know, where you are, so.
Okay. Alright, so go to Section Ten Personnel, Dr. Jean. There's a lot of, a lot of new names, sir.
So speaking of personnel, you, you have the presentations and the hires and all that. We have an additional new hire, our director of, uh, school safety and discipline. Offered today and accepted, and, uh, he's, uh, come to us from Keller I S D. Been in Mesquite and Tyler I S D, so he's come from the bigger districts. Excited to have him. Jeff Davis is his name, and so, uh, look forward to welcoming him, uh, hopefully next week, so, yeah.
Ready to bring a chance to meet this young man?
Well, um, we'll be, we'll have him at the next board meeting, so. And we can bring him in if they, with a, a special meeting, it's easy there, so.
Is there a hazing ritual, anything we need to put him through?
I don't know about that, I think it's gonna be a learning, you know, it can be learning on the fly, so. That's the whole reason we're trying to get him in in July, so.
Okay, alright.
And then, uh, I think we had a request to go into a special.
Yes, so I've requested to do that.
We have our attorneys here for that, so.
Okay, alright, so that will be, okay? So we will just go with that question. Section five, five, one, oh, seven, four?
Yeah.
Okay, so at this time, we will, uh, we'll go into closed session, uh, on matters concerning personnel. So Government Code five, five, one dot oh, seven, one and five, five, one dot oh, seven, four. So we'll, um, let everyone else go, and we'll go into closed session at seven o'clock.
Alright.